Or something like it's not.
(knocking)
We're led at that part.
Now it's public.
Calling to order, the Monday, June 4th, 2018, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor pro Tim Baker, Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henon.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to amend the agenda to move communications ahead of item number nine.
We have a motion to approve moving communications to Agenda Item Number Nine with a closed session at the end. Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have now reached the citizens' comments portion of our meeting. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in a discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay, we will move on. Move on to our order of business. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, May 14, 2018, and Tuesday, May 15, 2018, budget work sessions.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dean. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of the work sessions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. We now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two?
Motion number M-3818, matter of approving the 2018 summer maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M-3818?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is an annual item that we've engaged in for the last couple of years. Your packet includes a memo from the Road Commission as well as the agreement itself. I will call attention to the memo from the Public Works Director, specifically item number two, where it says Berkeley has been able to provide a higher level of service for street sweeping activities on 12 Mile than the Road Commission. Just wanted to take a moment to toot the horn of the staff down there at DPW, but if there's any items or questions, Mr. Schuler is available for those.
Thank you. This is the typical agreement that we enter into every year, so for street sweeping activities is summer maintenance, winter is salting and plowing, so we get a little bit of a reimbursement from our COC to sweep their road. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for members of council for our directors? Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, how often do we sweep 12 Mile there?
You know, it varies from year to year a little bit, but I would guess we're in the, you know, five to 10 sweepings per year pretty easily. We do, during the heavy times of the year, we're able to sweep the entire city in about a week and a half, all of the streets, that includes residential. That can vary depending on workload a little bit, but generally speaking, we're through the entire city in about a week and a half during sweeping time, so.
Thank you. Additional questions? Is there any change in the amount this year from last year?
No change in the amount this year. This does fluctuate depending on bid prices that our COC receives, but no change this year from last year.
Councilmember Blanchard?
This is the same agreement. I didn't read the whole thing. I scanned it over because it looked very similar.
It's the same. Same. It is the same.
Take note of that. Seeing no other questions or comments, thank you, Mr. Schuler. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-3818?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-3918, matter of approving the purchase of a 2018 Bobcat E-50 compact excavator with accessories at a total cost of $73,272.20 from Carlton Equipment Company of Chesterfield Township, Michigan, from vehicle account 592-536-985000.
Is there a motion to approve M-3918?
Motion to approve.
Support approved by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is a budget item that we've been looking to procure for quite some time. We're excited to get this in motion here. As is our typical way, we went out to Mitten. We bid this, the specs are included in your packet as well as the bid prices that we received back. And this is a, we're going with the lowest qualified bidder on this particular item, which is a corporation somewhat local, it's out of Chesterfield. So, again, Mr. Schuler is available for any questions from council.
Mr. Director?
Thank you, Matt. So, we have been very much looking forward to this purchase for some time. We've been renting these particular compact excavators now for a couple of years to make sure that they fit our needs, and we were able to put this in the budget for this year, and we were successful in doing so. This is a compact excavator that's going to allow us to work in tighter areas and be more efficient with our work in those areas. So, this machine, as opposed to a typical rubber tire backhoe, we're able to dig and swing around and actually load a truck in one step, as opposed to the backhoe where you physically cannot swing it all the way around. So, what you end up doing with the backhoe is you dig a hole, you put the pile of dirt down, and then that pile of dirt has to be touched again in order to be moved away. So, in addition to working in tighter spaces, this machine will allow us to be even more efficient as well as for water sewer repairs, anything like that. And again, we've been renting these off and on for a couple of years, and we found that they are very beneficial, and we're excited to get one to call our own. We did go out to bid for this, and we got seven vendors bidding multiple different options on this, and we are comfortable moving forward with the lowest cost option, which is the Bobcat.
Okay. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This also includes a plate compactor and a pavement breaker, right?
It does. So, it includes several attachments that we use on a day-to-day basis, really all of the attachments that we plan to use, so it'll be ready to go once we get it. I will say, as far as transporting this machine, as opposed to a rubber tire backhoe, that you can just drive down the street very easily. You're not going to want to drive this down the street to the job site. It does not go very fast at all, so it needs to have a trailer to go with it. So, I will be coming to you at a future date for a trailer. And actually, what we're thinking of using is a flatbed to fit on our hook truck that I talked to you about in the past, so we're excited to use the hook truck to actually have a flatbed that we can use to transport this machine as opposed to having another trailer accessory. So, we'll be coming to you for that purchase as well in the near future.
Okay. Additional questions? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. This purchase is coming in, what, $27,000 or so under the budget item? Maybe this question may be more for the city manager, but will that be used to offset some of the costs of maybe this flatbed you're talking about or other equipment purchases or back into equipment fund, or what's the plan with the savings that?
There are savings here, so this is going to go back into the fund because we actually did, while we may use this for the trailer, we did bid, we had the trailer as a separate line item for this, so there will be some, certainly some net savings for the city that will go back into our savings.
That will likely become future equipment purchases.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
So, am I correct in understanding then that you can't really use this until you get the trailer?
We can. We could physically rent a trailer. That would be no big deal.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll probably rent a trailer for a little bit off and on as we need it until we actually get the actual unit. I do expect that we'll end up going that route for a short period of time.
Okay.
Or you can drive it. It goes 3.1 miles an hour.
Very close by, hopefully.
Additional comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Schuler. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-3918, please?
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. M-3918 has been approved. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-4018, matter of appointing the Public Works Director Derek Schuler as the City of Berkeley's representative and city manager Matthew Baumgarten as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, SACRA, Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA board.
Is there a motion to approve M-4018?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean, support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is the first of two somewhat related items. Derek has done a great job of representing the City of Berkeley for many, many years to the SACRA board, and we ask that he continue to be the primary representative, and when needed, I would step in his place and attend a meeting, but very rarely does it ever have to happen. Derek is extremely diligent about attending these meetings and contributing to the betterment of the recycling efforts in Southeast Oakland County as a whole, so I think he's a rightful appointment.
Okay. Comments from council, questions? Mr. Schuler, yes, we're good?
Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll
on M-4018?
Stedman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-4118, matter of appointing the Berkeley Public Works Director Derek Schuler as the City of Berkeley's representative and city manager Matthew Baumgarten as alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, SACRA, Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA board.
Is there a motion to approve M-4118?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner, I have a feeling we're going to hear some similar things.
It's another annual item, similar approach, Derek being the primary representative. Again, he does a phenomenal job. He's very well respected by this board as well, just like he is on the recycling board, so we ask to continue the precedent that we've set over the last two years.
Not only is he well respected by the respective boards that you have mentioned, also very well respected in our neighboring communities as well. Whenever we go out to anywhere and meet with our peers in neighboring communities, we always hear great things about our department and about our director, so we're very thankful to have you, and we're happy to put you onto the SACRA board. Any additional comments or questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-4118?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Okay, Derek, you're getting a little busier. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-4218, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015-2018 bargaining agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley Ask Me.
Is there a motion to approve M-4218?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ask Me is our DPW staff. Again, like I say, we've had a couple opportunities to tout how good of a job that they do. On the labor side, we've been discussing with their bargaining unit the possibility of extending their three-year contract one additional year. If you recall from just a few months ago, we were able to do this with the Public Safety Union as well. A little bit different from what you saw previously with Public Safety, the Ask Me bargaining unit opted to go for a 50 cent raise as opposed to a 2% raise. So, for, it's very close. In fact, if you take the, if you draw the numbers out from a 2% raise to a straight 50 cent an hour raise, it's only about $1,500 difference over the course of the next budget year. That's calculating base salaries. But they, there are various reasons that they discussed throughout their negotiation process as to why they felt moving everybody at the same dollar amount as opposed to the same percentage amount was more equitable to various levels that they have within their department. So, our conversation with them continues. We're not going to, if this prevails, if we're able to approve this this evening, we already start working on what will be the 2019 contract. So, again, we've been working very closely with this unit to try to correct some items that they feel need to be addressed and make everybody a little bit happier for next year, so looking for something that benefits, of course, the city as a whole as well as the bargaining unit itself, so.
Questions, comments from council? Council, nope. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. All right, are there limits on the number of one-year extensions that can be done before, you know, we have to have a longer period that's then in place?
I've never heard of any.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, if both, if agreed upon by both parties, then you could.
It could go on indefinitely, although it seldom goes beyond one or two, maybe.
Yeah, and to note, we are seeking, at the end of 19, at the contract beginning of 19, we will be seeking at least a three-year agreement for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, I think Mr. Baumgartner did a good job of explaining how we got to this point. Again, as our director is well respected, so is our entire department and the folks that make that happen, so happy to enter into a mutually beneficial agreement, which is the goal anytime that we are entering into collective bargaining with any of our units, so thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-4218, please?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-2218, matter of authorizing the execution of the public unit master signature authorization agreement between the City of Berkeley and Flagstar Bank to provide necessary authorizations for deposits, withdrawals, and other basic bank business on behalf of the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-2218?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Again, first of two related items. This is mandatory items for the appointment of a new public, or finance director. Ms. Ginger Burke Miller is now officially our sworn finance director, so with that comes access to being able to operate within the banking system and represent the City of Berkeley fiscally to their banks. So, this is one of the ways in which she does that.
Are there any questions? We're happy to have a new finance director officially started.
Yeah.
This is certainly something that we need to do. It's a normal operation of business. This does not impact any of the controls that we've spoke of with the audit. That'll come separately, our internal controls.
That will come separately, sir. This is standard items. Right.
You can do this, and then we can get into the other things. Excellent. Seeing no other questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-2218?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Moving right along, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-4318, matter of appointing Finance Director Ginger Burke Miller to the Public Safety Pension Board with a term expiring on July 1st, 2022, to replace Entram Finance Director John Pepperman.
Is there a motion to approve M-4318?
Motion to approve.
By Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. State statute that created the public safety, or authorized the city to utilize public safety pension boards mandates that the city treasurer be seated on that board. Our finance director also serves as the city treasurer, and so with local governing body support, she'll be seated in her state authorized capacity on this body.
Okay. Questions? Seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Excuse me.
On M-4318?
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on tonight's agenda?
Communications?
Uh-huh. Who's up?
That would be Councilmember Stedman.
Councilmember Stedman.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor, except enjoy this wonderful weather.
You will, thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
A couple of things, Your Honor. I'd like to remind everybody that we have a lot of art coming up this weekend. We got art in the boat on Friday, and we got the Art Bash on Saturday, and Maribou 12 Mile Road will be closed from 04 a.m., excuse me, on Saturday until 2200 or 10 p.m. on Saturday night. 2200.
Got it.
Yeah. Mickey's a big hand, you know. There's going to be between 140 and 150 artists, lots of things going on down there, so it should be very, very exciting. Another thing, I put some flyers on the table there if anybody wants to take them on summer fire safety. It's grilling season. Please be careful when you're grilling. I have been, not recently, but I have been to a grill fire with the fire department here when people got too careless and lit the grill and then went inside and forgot that it was on, and on a wooden deck. And wooden decks do burn, so just be careful. Keep three-foot safe zone around any grill, excuse me, away from your house. Keep kids outside of that three-foot zone. A lot of, just a lot of common sense things, so there's some handouts there if anybody would like to take one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
Parks and Rec. Totlot Storytime in the Park is Tuesday, June 12th at 10 a.m. Senior Picnic at J.C. Park, Thursday, June 14th at 11 a.m. Parks and Rec is kicking off its Summer Fest events at the Totlot, June 19th, which is a Saturday, from 5 to 7 p.m. And the Community Garage Sale takes place Friday and Saturday, June 22nd and 23rd. Registration's open for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
The Environmental Advisory Committee, they'll be manning a bike corral at Art Bash coming up. It'll be at Gardner and 12 Mile, so you can ride your bike up, and someone will watch over it for you while you enjoy the festival. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission met on May 22nd, and they approved a site plan for the Berkeley Marathon to add an accessory structure for storage purposes when taking deliveries. Additionally, they agreed to set schedules for public hearing dates for proposed ordinance changes, for automobile sales, outdoor displays, and also ordinance amendment for accessory structures. So, and then finally, at the Planning Commission on that day, there was a summary given of the Public Participation Plan survey results, and so the Community Development Director is going to draft that, bring it back to the Planning Commission for an extended public comment section going forward. So, the next meeting is the 26th at 7:30, and then for Coolidge Task Force, we're meeting this Thursday, the 7th, at 8 a.m. in the Public Safety Conference Room. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We, just a couple weeks, or just last week, we had our open house on the proposed updates to the village, the infrastructure village that we'd like to make. We had great turnout. I was very, very happy with those that came. Great conversation, great questions. It's really, really refreshing as we're having more of these public meetings to see the same faces over and over, as people really are educating themselves on what some of the challenges faced in the city, but it's also great to see a lot of the new faces as well. And so, it was really, really over the moon with how these first three sessions have gone. We'll have some others coming up in August, September, and October, leading up to the November ballot. Just a reminder that City Council has not formally placed these items on the agenda yet, so staff will be bringing to City Council suggested language for those ballot questions, likely at the next meeting on the 18th, so looking forward to that. On the topic of grill safety, not that I know personally, but I know baking soda will put out a grease fire if that ever comes up, so not that, you know, my house is nearly blown up once before, but, but that is, those are great, that is great information for people, and it can certainly get to be a dangerous situation quickly, so thank you for mentioning those. Councilmember Blanchard, not the only items I have, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Well, we'll be talking about my legal matters in a few minutes, and beyond that, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Just a few quick items. First, I want to congratulate the Dad's Club and Mom's Club on their opening day festivities this past Saturday. It was, you know, 95 degrees, and then we get to a parade, and it's 50 degrees that morning, but the kids enjoyed it. It was great. Paws was there. The Dad's Club and the Mom's Club do a tremendous job. But I specifically want to thank all the volunteers that run those two organizations and the coaches that volunteer to coach the kids. It takes a tremendous amount of time to run those programs, and they wouldn't be nearly as successful without all the hard work and volunteers of all of their, all of the folks that volunteer time, just like it is for the city, everybody who volunteers on a board. We wouldn't be successful without them, and the same thing to the Moms and Dads Club. And I really want to thank all of the folks that serve on the board, volunteer, work on fields, and certainly coach the kids, so that's tremendous opportunity. We talked about what a big Saturday we have with Art Bash coming up. It's, you know, a big event. We always have a great turnout. It seems to get better and better every year. We also have Lids for Kids that day as well, so you just keep heading right on down 12
We talked about what a big Saturday we have with Art Bash coming up. It's, you know, a big event. We always have a great turnout. It seems to get better and better every year. We also have Lids for Kids that day as well, so you just keep heading right on down 12 Mile, or if you start here, then head down 12 Mile. And Monday, the 18th, we have the Public Safety Golf Outing, which helps fund Lids for Kids. So we have a number of things coming up. We do have a meeting that night, but the golf outing is prior to that. So if you are interested in participating in the Public Safety Golf Outing to help fund Fire Safety Open House and Lids for Kids, and some of the other things that our Public Safety officers do for the community, feel free to go on their Facebook page. I'm sure you can sign up for some there. I have a feeling they're probably not turning folks away. But it's always, you know, those kind of events that allow us to have the Lids for Kids this weekend. So we've got a lot of fun. I'm sure the weather will be tremendous. Art Bash, Lids for Kids, and then the Public Safety Golf Outing. And that is all I have. So with that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the next item on the agenda?
Closed session, matter of considering whether to meet in closed session after conclusion of the regular meeting to consult with the city's attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, namely Thompson versus Officers Coburnick and Harriman, U.S. District Court Number 2016 CV 10161, DPHDRG, and 27799 Woodward LLC versus City of Berkeley, Oakland County Circuit Court Number 2017-159355CZ.
All right, before I call for a motion to adjourn to, into closed session, I want to let everybody know we will be coming back after the closed session, potentially, depending on what is discussed in that closed session, to take action on one item. But the closed session could take a long time. So you're certainly more than welcome to stay in here. We will be coming back after. But we wanted to have communications up front to be able to get as much to the crowd as possible before we adjourn and before we return, because we're not sure how long it's going to take. With that, everybody's on board, understands what we're doing, what we're coming back to. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Councilmember Dean, support?
Support.
Support. Councilmember Blanchard? We will adjourn, and we will return later. Getting some water. We are reconvening the regular meeting of the 37th Council at 8:55. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Here.
Henon?
Here.
Stedman?
Here.
Blanchard?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Turbrack?
Here.
Do we have any motions on the floor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the city's attorney to proceed with disposition of the Thompson case in accordance with her recommendation.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, supported by Councilmember Dean. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes.